I'm out of the truck. I dropped my arms off and then I'm on the road. But it's just a long, long road. But.
You didn't, you didn't ever talk to the.
Oh, wow.
I don't think I've called dispatch one time in my life.
It may happen to be the power in the bus today. But I can't wait until I get up. I suffered a case, you know who owns it? And I said, yes, we'll call him.
Okay, at this time, I move to end the closed session and resume the open portion of the Wakefield Township Planning Commission. Is there support? Seconded by George. Do a roll call vote. Yeah? Any call?
Yes.
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 George?
Yeah.
Tom, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, we're back to our open meeting. Uh, the next topic was a... Talking about a proposed bylaw amendment. I guess, do we want to move forward with that or not? Discussing at this time. On a proposed bylaw amendment. Dealing with conflicts of interest.
So I, um... I think that, given that we are looking more into how we can address public events if more than a quorum has a conflict, I would like to look into that further to know what our options are for our discussions with Kyle. So I, I would make a motion that we table that until we can see the correspondence from the attorney that um, covers our options as far as the rule necessity.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table the bylaw amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Motion, here.
For, just for clarity, for, for my, my sake, assuming the planning commission wants basically me to address how to draft, or how, how a planning commission can treat when more than a quorum has conflicts of interest and to distribute that to the planning commission for guidance of whether to apply the rule of necessity or whether there are any alternative options. Is that, is that correct? I just want to make sure that there consensus before it asked me to do that.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, since we're talking about conflict of interest, I'd like to make a couple remarks in regards to that. I want to address an issue with the planning commission and the public. I know others have wind leases as well. And some of this might apply to them, but this is on behalf of myself. Although I have a wind lease with Apex, I'm going to make any decision to recommend a zoning ordinance amendment related to utility scale wind energy is in the best interest of the entire township. I would recuse myself from deliberation and voting on any ordinance if I did not feel this way. No decision I make on recommending draft wind ordinance will be made solely in the interest of me just having a wind lease. Speaking further, I believe any recommended ordinance will be a legislative matter of public concern and apply to any entity that may pursue a wind project in the township, not just Apex. I've reviewed the various statutes and content cited in the letters by Josh Nolan and Robert Scott. Our township has also had both letters. Supporting case law and template lease provisions reviewed by our attorney, who has provided confidential legal advice. The township supervisor is aware of my lease, lease? I would like to remind the public that any action the planning commission takes, including votes by anyone with a wind lease, is simply recommend, a recommendation for an ordinance. The final ordinance must be approved by the township board. Subject to any referendum by the public. Such a recommendation will not govern Apex in any way. Unless any member of the planning commission wants to discuss this any further, I plan to deliberate and vote on any proposed wind ordinance and will consider this matter closed. Those with individual conflicts of interest questions are encouraged to contact our township attorney and disclose any potential conflicts to board. Any other discussion on that, otherwise we'll move to talk about the wind ordinance. All right, uh, in our last meeting, we kind of dove into the ordinance. I think Kyle had a few changes that we made and he updated those. If you want to go through those a little bit.
There we go. Uh, sure, Chair, I will direct the planning commission, I did draft a memo related to all of the changes that I believe the planning commission had consensus on in the ordinance. For benefit, I think, of the planning commission, as well as the public of the red lines I made to the ordinance, or the template at least I should say that we had because there have been substantial changes at this point. Those would be reflected in what is labeled as Document Six. So if we go to page one and throughout, I modified basically what the township was starting with to refer to what is basically the wind project land use as a wind energy facility, rather than using two defined terms that was present in the original draft. That template, or that model that has been used in other communities, uses two defined terms, in my opinion, that's confusing. So I, I basically deleted the other term and used one term. Uh, similar on that, I've got a memo on, on point two. We're substantially modifying the ordinance that was initially proposed. I adjusted some additional stylistic issues. So there's definitions in that model that is used in other places and, and, you know, some places may like it, some places may not like it, but there are definitions that more or less are, are defined, but sparingly used in not a meaningful way or not used at all. So generally, I'm in favor of basically reducing unnecessary language, and that's what I did. Occupied building and habitable structure are basically intended to mean, I believe in that model, to mean the same thing. I, I condensed them into one definition. Okay, now going to the actual changes that, uh, that are substantive. Lighting and ADLS, if you go to page five and six on what's Document Six, that would require an aircraft detection lighting system unless prohibited by basically governing law that would preempt the township. That would basically manage the blinking lights on any turbines to be off unless there's aircraft nearby. Going to four, application escrow account. Page six now includes an express reference that applicants would need to if they were to apply for a project to fund an escrow account so the township could hire legal assistants, planning assistants, engineers, other consultants to assist with the review of any application at the applicant's expense. Funds held by the township so they could hire a third party, basically, experts. There are, I would note that other provisions of the zoning ordinance potentially already authorized this, but I think it is a good idea, you know, the planning commission's kind of desire to add this. I think it's a good idea that expressly added within this section as well. Going to five, page six on your ordinance again. Applications for a wind project must provide evidence of meeting shadow flicker requirements in the wind ordinance as part of their application materials. Without assuming, an applicant will use what is, sometimes they refer to as... Show us the term they use for it. It's basically, sometimes they may apply and say, well, we're going to, we're going to count, you know, we're going to plant trees here so there's not going to be shadow flicker. Basically, it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow, it's called mitigation rather than curtailment. So again, it's written to not allow that. Because, you know, typically that is hard to verify. And then the second point and aspect of that is it would require an applicant to provide a post-construction analysis of any project, if there were a project applied for and approved, of how shadow flicker requirements are met. Sound study analysis, page six, similar concept, requiring a sound study as part of application materials to basically show that they're going to meet sound standards. Again, you know, I think this is important for the planning commission as well as the public, for that matter. You know, there is, these application requirements are consistent upon the applicant submitting information. So some may think, well, that's information that's from a third party, or, you know, an advocate. I guess I should say that the word advocate or applicant or developer, what happens if that's not accurate information? So that's where your application escrow account comes in. You would have a planner, engineer, potentially, essentially, review their reports and determine whether their reports are accurate or whether they, whether they find issues with them. So they would require, they would need that at the beginning. And then the second thing they would need to do is if there were a project approved and if there were a project constructed, they would have to prepare a post-construction sound study to show at receptive points whether the sound standards are met in the ordinance. And then a study every five subsequent years to ensure that sound study, or basically sound requirements are continuing to, to be met. Seven, and page seven on your red line as well. This requires an applicant to prepare an acceptable complaint resolution plan so applicants can initially respond to and potentially resolve potential ordinance violations. This is, in, in my mind, a layered approach of how to basically enforce your ordinance. You, one, want to have the applicant address any issues. Two, you would have, and I'll, and I'll talk about it later, an escrow account that would have funds to allow the township to pursue their own investigations. And then three, outside of all of those, you do have the, basically, if you violate the zoning ordinance, there, there are penalties under law to, to enforce it. So it's a layered approach and typically that, if there were projects, which are utility scale wind projects in the township, an applicant generally will have technology or... Yeah, I guess it should be technology, and experts that would be able to potentially address concerns as they come. This also requires a reporting requirement to report such complaints to the planning commission, I believe the language says. So that you're basically aware that, you know, someone submitted a complaint. This is what the, the potential applicant, uh, operator is doing. And if you don't believe that is the correct course of action, the, the township could potentially, could get involved. Going to eight, page nine, transportation plan. This basically more clarifies the ordinance, but it would require an applicant to submit a transportation plan regarding construction haul routes in the township if there were a project, again. And that's a big F. And, and it would require a plan to be posted with the township and the road commission to ensure that any damage to roads based on any construction would be essentially paid for, to, for the repairs paid for by the applicant. And they would typically post the financial security to, to have funds to do that. Nine, continuing escrow deposit. This would only apply if there were a project construction in the township. This would require funds to be set aside by an applicant in escrow for use by the township to investigate any ordinance violations. And this would be typically in the case, you know, your complaint resolution plan is not working or you don't believe there's an adequate response to the complaint resolution plan. So this is how you could, how the township could independently doing, do this enforcement actions without, without financial liability on the township. So those are the items that I have added to the ordinance, which I believe the planning commission had consensus on at the last meeting. I did also in this memo, I, I listed a variety of different topics that you may want to just go through. With the, I think there's eighteen topics, oh, there's seventeen topics and then kind of a save all at the end that you may want to go through when you're considering drafting an ordinance of this, of this nature. You can have it successful ordinance, I think, without adding some of these because remember, when you're doing a special use permit, the planning commission is always authorized to impose conditions on a project and especially, you know, that would be very relevant because projects can be in different locations and, and one, one location of a project may require certain condition that a location of another project does not require. So it's a very important piece to consider while you're working on this is you're, you're... I know the, the conversation has turned to one applicant, but you need to think about this would apply to anybody who wants this land use in, in the, in the township and how we should appropriately regulate those in basically the, the normal circumstance. So that is, that's why, that's why I kind of added all of these. There are, what I would say, based on my experience, the most difficult ones to address of these are going to be sound setbacks and shadow flicker. Those are, you know, everywhere, those are the most difficult discuss, discussions that a planning commission or township board has to have. And the rest of these, I can tell you the merits of them. I can tell you how they may address something or they may not address something. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Sometimes it may be easier to start with the easiest and go from easiest to hardest. Other times I've been told, and, you know, I've been told from some very smart people, you always start with the hardest topics. You kind of build consensus with the hardest topics and then they, then you kind of end with the easiest. I don't know, it, I think it's a personal preference from, for, for each person. In, in this context, it might be, it might be better to start with the easiest, so kind of starting. In, in some ways, the, the list from the bottom up. But they're not, basically after, let's see, six or seven, oh, eight is a difficult topic, height requirement. But after that, they, uh, they become kind of, I, I would say they're, they're on the same level of, of difficulty to address. So I'm happy to go in the direction of however the planning commission wants to, to address the ordinance.
I guess one thing I noticed in the setbacks, they're determining the height based on hub height. And I think most ordinances are going by the tip height. The blades are probably a hundred foot long, so that would actually make it a little further. Some kind of suggestion that probably should be changed to tip, measuring it from the tip instead of the hub.
I agree, because I think that's how most people think about it.
So my thoughts on that are that basically, we want to come to a setback of, of a number. And if you, if you use hub height, your multiplier would probably be high, would be higher than if you use tip height. So I think it, sometimes it's helpful to think of that number and then get there. But I, in, in, based on my experience, I've seen, I, I agree with you, Chair, that I've seen most ordinances use the tip height.
I have a question, that usually in some of the ordinances that you have or look in other towns or townships, is it two times or one and a half? I've seen where it's been one and a half also.
Uh, so that...
That's what I talked about in the past, I clapped it back here before, it's all, it's that.
No, that's a very good question, and what I can tell you, George, is they vary dramatically. So, um, you know, in some counties, in some townships, it's one and a half times. In some, uh, you know, there, there are communities that decide that, you know, they do not like the land use. That's what I, that's what I'm assuming. Why they add a setback that is, you know, basically that would make the developable area very small. They would impose a very high set, a very large setback. When you think about setbacks, I think there's a couple things to think about. One, how a setback has an impact on safety. Two, uh, you know, you, you may want to think about parcel sizes. So if you have a forty acre parcel, that's a square, I think, that would make every side thirteen and under twenty feet. So, and, and kind of, there's also, in, in some ways, there's an aesthetic concern about, you know, how this, how the setbacks work, but at the, at the same time, generally a turbine, even, even those larger setbacks would still be visible. So, um, sometimes that's a little bit of a red herring to say, you know, I'm going to fix an aesthetic concern by a setback. Because what you're, what you're really doing is when you're, you're making a large setback, you're making it so the developable, it makes the developable area not, makes it very small or non-existent.
Why, what's the tallest you've seen in an ordinance?
Tallest, uh, like setback? I mean, I've seen some ordinances that, that draft, like they'll draft like a four thousand foot setback.
Good.
Yay!
That sounds good.
So, and, and for people who do not like the land use, they, they like that, right? But when you're thinking of an ordinance of, you know, there's two ways to think about it. If you don't like the land use at all, you, you use methods like that, I mean, it's relatively, I don't want to say it's easy, but it's relatively straightforward and, and more or less easy to draft an ordinance that would not allow the land use. And that's, that's usually one of the tools that, that you, you use.
So, since we're, I, it sounds like we're going to talk about the, uh, the height and setback right now. Last, we pretty much ended the last time where I was asking for four times the tip height with a zero setback from participating properties and asking for that because that, to me, would get more people involved and leave, leave us people out. And, uh, you know, put more of the developable, you know, the, the area that's going to be developed on the shoulders of the developer, rather than the planning commission and the township just handing over, you know, so much bigger area. And for me, I mean, just the, I think, most people, just the feel of being, the idea of being under something like that. It's got to be that quite a ways before, it wouldn't feel like, you know, that's, that's right over you. Well, that's why I'm suggesting that. Thank you.
I mean, I agree with what you said. I, I feel that, um, I've seen quite a few ordinances that have four times the tip height, some have more. And I feel for safety reasons mainly, I mean, there's all kinds of things. There's aesthetics, like you said, um, there's, you know, limiting the effect of a turbine not participating property. So, so I feel that setbacks should be from the property line, not from the structure. And they should, and I think four is a good place to start, four times the tip height. And I think we need to talk about having a height limit also, if you have no height limit.
So how I've seen this be successful, because this is, this is, what, I think, this is a very good conversation. Julie, that was a very good point about the height. I think, um, I think sometimes you want to limit yourself to, to one topic because otherwise, once you start doing, and it's nothing against you, I mean, I do it myself. Once you start about, stop, start talking about like fifteen different topics, then you kind of, there's no way the planning commission pulls any consensus, so...
Okay, let's try the concept back.
Yeah, let's, let's try that. And this is going to be one of the most difficult ones, and I know you do have a lot of, or I think you have two lakes in the township, township more, um, which also builds into setback concerns as well.
I, I do think that the setbacks, there should be three tiers involved. One for residents, one for non-participating property lines, and then one for roads and power lines and other infrastructure that already exists. So I, I do think there needs to be three layers of setbacks, and they all need to be appropriate for what you're setback from. And I do think we do need to look at for our township and overlay district, especially for where there's a heavily populated area in our township.
So overlay area, what do you do? I would think you're going to pick the most populated areas of the township and draw a circle around them.
Probably have to go to a physical road, I would think that'd be the simplest.
So how I've seen overlay districts done for this, so right now, how this is set up is we would allow these in the ag district. How you could do an overlay district, I've seen in a number of ways. One, you, you draw literal lines, you know, you have some aerial mapping or some type of GIS mapping where you, you draw the lines, you don't, you don't even necessarily even have to follow a road, where you just X out what you think are populated areas. Another way to do that that's a little simpler is you look at the sections of the township and you cross out certain sections of the township. You can do it that way, that's a, that's a relatively simple way to make an overlay. So those are the, those are the two ways I'm aware of, I'm sure you can do even more. But that's, that's what I've seen.
I mean, I'm not opposed to an overlay district, except that, are you suggesting that that the setbacks be different in the overlay district? Or just that we, we agree on setbacks and height and all that, and then that they only can place in the overlay district? Like beyond...
Overlay, that would basically be a non-turbine area.
Okay.
That'd be the area that they wouldn't...
Okay, so in the area that they can, we'd still be discussing the same height, height limits and setback laws? The buildings wouldn't be different?
That, that would be, in my mind, unless, you know, I'm talking to the...
I guess I, I thought...
That would be correct.
Okay, I thought overlay meant where you can enter, but you guys are saying where you can't.
Yeah, yeah, so the overlay is kind of like your zoning district, it's basically you're in and you're, you're in or you're out. So you can have turbines within the overlay district. If you're outside the overlay district, you cannot have turbines. It's kind of like your zoning district. Let's say you, you know, right now, I don't think you have in your residential district, or at least we did not propose authorizing turbines, so you can never, you can never build a turbine there.
Currently, we're only talking about ag district, right?
Correct.
Only places like villages or lakes or airports, they can't be built there anyway.
They could not, but I will say, if you, you would have to look at your zoning map. There are probably areas that you would consider to be potentially have some form of, of residential development. That would be a little bit different than what I would say rural residential and, and kind of more harming. That would be within the ag district. That's, that's my interpretation, but you'd have to look at the zoning map to kind of come to that conclusion.
Lot of topics here, you know, we could spend two hours probably on setbacks, but maybe we want to shift gears and talk about a little simpler. We want to, we got a public comment yet tonight, but... I mean, as far as the overlay district, if we want to try to set something up around the lakes or... How would we go about doing that?
Does anyone else have any input on, on setbacks in terms of height? I, I mean, four times, we'll start off here a couple times. Does anyone have anything else to say on that? I mean, we could, I could make a motion, but I, I don't know if anyone else, no? Is there any other discussion on that?
I guess I wondered why height can result in, if we're going to talk setbacks on height. A project would be more, more filthy. Why do we need that? Why is that interesting to have a...
I, I guess the only reason would be the hypothetical situation where there's enough room to put one a thousand feet high or something, or fifteen hundred feet high.
Or seven hundred feet.
Which, which...
So I, I think the idea of having a height limit in addition to setback... So I, I think the idea of having a height limit in addition to setbacks is that the taller it is, but for safety reasons, the taller it is, the farther it should be away from a, a structural, you know, non-participating property, so you, you have to look at both, but do we start with height and stuff?
Overlet?
Yeah, that automatically happens with the setback.
I think the, so there's, there's two moving pieces here and I'm gonna just try to do this help the planning commission. And some, how some of these setbacks, so we've been talking about, uh, multiplier factor. If there's no height limitation, then the taller the turbine, the taller the long, the, the bigger the setback, 'cause it's kind of a mathematical formula. Or you could set a flat number, um, flat number, if you don't have a, a height, you know, gap, then, um, you know, you could end up in a sit, I, I don't think there is a situation where you have a fifteen hundred foot turbine, but you could have a fifteen hundred foot turbine and, you know, a thousand foot setback and, and potentially there could be safety concerns.
I think the other thing for me with a height limit is for aesthetics, like, you know, we could, we could do an overlay around more populated areas, but if you have no height limit, then, you know, you're gonna see it for ten miles away anyway potentially, so it's, I mean, if we're just looking at aesthetics, I think is okay to consider, I think we should consider it, especially given the public comment that we've, you know, we've gotten about it. We need to consider i- if we don't have height limits, how many people is this really gonna affect? Whether it's safety or aesthetics or property values or whatever.
I guess one thing about the height limit, we don't really know what the height of these are gonna be, I mean, they're changing all the time. They're, uh, might be getting bigger or smaller, we don't know the technology. You know, bigger they are, the, the less turbines could be around in the area, that might be a positive. So, I mean, there's some issues to think about as far as height.
Three hundred feet.
Sir, you can talk in public comment or you can leave now.
You gonna take me?
Officer Barry would be glad to escort you out.
No, you're gonna do it.
If you'd like to.
So I'll, I'll just say, you know, obviously it's a divisive issue, okay? And the open meetings act does provide that if you're disrupting the meeting, you can take, you can essentially remove people or, or disrupting the meeting. I think everybody, for the most part, is doing a very good job of not disrupting the meeting and people in all forms of life are gonna say things that you may disagree with and sometimes you just have to sit and listen. And because this isn't a public hearing, you know, nobody's voting on anything. So, just, I, I would strongly encourage you to, I think, do what a lot of your, your peers are doing in the audience and, and waiting for the appropriate time to voice concerns to the planning commission.
Well, the setback would do a fair amount of restriction of height and it may be that, you know, if we address that first, we'll find out.